Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, February 27th, 2018. Will please rise for a moment of silence. Of the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Moron?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Shertel?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Xandri? Chairman Savoni?
Here. Councilor Xandri did advise me that he has a work obligation which is preventing him from attending. Onto the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move if we approve or accept consent agenda items A through Q.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. On the consent agenda, there were several appointments. John Smith to the Board of Ethics, Bob Parisi to ZBAA, Lou Schwinski to ZBAA, Dave Parent to Inland Wetlands, and Robert Simon to Inland Wetlands. If you're here and would like to be sworn, please come forward. Thank you for serving, gentlemen. Onto item four. There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, the public question and answer period. If you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
Garrett Stancuna, 18 Old Village Circle. With every school shooting that passes by, many students, including myself, are becoming more and more fearful to go to school every day. Many are demanding a school resource officer, as well as other security. Some are even considering arming teachers and having metal detectors at every entrance of a school. Are any of these options currently on the table or in the works of becoming a reality in the town of Wallingford?
We are having a meeting a week from tonight, and the intention of that meeting is to receive a presentation on the measures that are in place for security and mental health in our schools and our community. I don't have a more specific answer than that.
Will there be a question and answer period in that said meeting?
There will be the opportunity for public comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chardullo?
Paul Chardullo, 2 Bayberry Drive. I have a question for our legal department. Mr. Farrell, can I direct the question through the chair?
I will allow you to do that.
Thank you. The question I have is if the administration, actually any administration, decides, makes a conscious decision to not follow the charter of the town in certain areas, in particular as it relates to transparency or finances, or something's written in the charter, should do this, they're not doing it. Are they breaking the law?
It's really a hypothetical question, and, you know, I'm the town's lawyer, and if that situation arose, I would have to judge all the facts. I'm not going to answer a hypothetical at this point.
Okay. And the reason I raise it is I've had a few concerns about certain areas that I don't think we're following the charter in. And I've raised them here publicly a number of times. I've communicated them in writing. And so far, I haven't had any reaction. So I thought I'd raise that tonight. So I guess what I'd like to ask is if you're receptive, Mr. Farrell, would you be willing to sit with me, say, sometime over the next couple of weeks, and I can share the issues that I'm referring to and get your feedback? Or is that inappropriate?
No, the law department attorneys always try to meet with citizens.
Good. And one last question. If as a result of that conversation, you ended up agreeing with me, considering that you're first and foremost a member of the court, what action would you take?
Again, you're dealing in hypotheticals, and I don't want to go there.
So you're not sure what action you would take? Okay. Thank you.
Certainly. Mr. Morganstein?
Good evening. Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. Through the chair to the mayor, please.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, on February 9th, you were at a meeting at the PUC, also Mr. Farrell and Janice Small. Could you tell us about that meeting?
Mr. Morganstein, if you could stay closer to the mic, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Could you give us an update on the CMEC meeting at the PUC? You guys went into executive session for an hour and a half.
Mr. Morganstein, executive sessions are for that reason. They're done for the reason that they're protected, and there's a reason that what went on at executive session meetings is not discussed in public.
Could you also, who is attorney Robert O'Neill and attorney Denise Gouet? They also attended.
They're attorneys who represent the town in the arbitration with CMEC that is ongoing.
So is there any end in sight? Is there an end date?
There's been several times where we thought the ending was close, and it's not there yet.
Is there going to be the PUC coming before the council for more funding for this legal matter?
I can't answer that. I'm unaware of whether that will be necessary.
Is there going to be a time where the PUC is going to come up and update the council and the public on this matter?
I think that when an updating is needed, they will come before the council.
So even though you met for an hour and a half, this has been ongoing for a few years now. We've spent over a million dollars, I'm not even sure what it's at, two million, and we still don't know, even though you met for an hour and a half, there is nothing that you could update the public with at this point, or the council?
That is correct.
It just seems that, given our interest as a town, as taxpayers, as ratepayers, it seems that the public should have more of a right to know. And at this point, all I could do is ask and point out that we're not getting any information. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Mr. Stancuna?
Good evening. My name's Daryl Stancuna, 18 Old Village Circle. I have some questions directly about the homeless shelter downtown. Is there basically like something being out where there's donations coming in? Because I know we have the Master's Manor, and I've been down there, and there's just not enough donations coming in for people that need clothes, food. And so I was wondering if there could be some kind of advertisement through the town that, you know, if anyone has any old goods or whatnot, if they want to donate food to the pantry, stuff like that. If we could probably give something out to the town residents that we're in need of taking care of the town. We got people that are barely making it financially and need clothing and whatnot, and we're just not getting enough items to these places and food and whatnot. So if we get some kind of advertisement somehow to the residents to let them know that there are people suffering out there financially and used clothes, especially with the winter we've had.
The Wallingford Emergency Shelter is, for several years, has been managed by Columbus House. So you're certainly free to contact Columbus House to let them know that you have concerns and see what they have to say about it, if you'd like. I can reach out to Columbus House and let them know that you have concerns.
Columbus House in New Haven?
Yes.
Is there any way, see, that's what I was trying to say for about a year now, over a year, that we really shouldn't be asking another city to do something that we're residents and taxpayers in Wallingford. I mean, that doesn't make any sense, but...
Well, Columbus House is a nonprofit that, as far as I understand, is independent of the city of New Haven, and the Wallingford Emergency Shelter Board moved in that direction.
Okay, but can we, like I just requested from the floor, if we could get some kind of advertisement to the residents in the town to, you know, if we could donate, if you got any loose clothing or extra cans of food, you know, do like a food drive like they have at schools for certain events or not. Maybe Wallingford could have one for the homeless shelter. Like do a food drive, you know, the one-day event that we could donate to the food shelter down there for clothes and master manors, too.
As I said, if you'd like, I'm happy to communicate that to the Columbus House for you, or you can contact them yourself.
Yeah, if you can contact them, but also if we could do something here in town, too, and do a food drive, is what I'm asking. Do like a Wallingford food drive.
You know, I don't know that that would necessarily be a council function, but I'll look into it for you.
Okay. And then the other events, too. We have, you know, like my son had mentioned, uneventful events going on in the world. And if we could possibly have, like, you know, police maybe in the morning time go to whatever school start first, like Lyman Hall starts and Sheehan starts first. So get a couple squad cars there in the morning time for everyone could just feel a little safer. I've been, I drop my kids off every day at Lyman Hall. I haven't seen a squad car out there since this terrible event had happened two weeks ago. And I thought for sure after Valentine's Day, there'd be a squad car at Lyman Hall, you know, but there was nobody. There hasn't been any squad cars. I've been, you know, I bring my kids every day to school, and I haven't seen any police cars. And so what I think we should possibly do, if we can have the council do, see if we could get, maybe get two squad cars or whatever, one squad car each school, let these kids feel safe, that there's, you know, deterrence, and then have them switch over to DAG and Moran because, you know, the timeframes, and then to the elementary schools and just add that to the clock.
So if those are administrative decisions, they wouldn't be within the purview of the council. They would only come before us if there was additional funding required for those items. But there are members of the administration here, and I'm sure they've heard what you've requested.
Who would I need to ask that question to?
Police chief.
Is he here tonight?
He's not, but the mayor is.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if we could please do that, because I bring my kids to school every day, and I'll tell you right now, there was not one squad car. I thought for sure. It's been over two weeks. And, you know, if you could, it wouldn't be any overtime, by the way. Just have them part of their post during the day instead of just standing out in the corner downtown, just standing there at people. Just go to the schools, have a squad car there in the morning for the kids could feel comfortable, like, wow, okay, this is safe, rather than showing it on TV like that event that happened at Sheehan. We shouldn't have to wait for an event to happen, to have the police show up. We should, that's what they're getting paid for. They get a lot of money. Have them go to these schools. Have them come into the schools.
There's very active coordination, cooperation, involvement of the Wallingford Police Department in the public school system. They are previously and continuing to provide every effort to make for a safe environment for our public schools.
They haven't been there in the morning. I bring my kids to school every morning. I haven't seen that one squad car except from the Sheehan incident on TV. We shouldn't have to wait for incidents. We should have them, see if, you know, you could make the move, have them bring the squad cars, you know, have one go to Sheehan when that starts, have one go to Lyman Hall, and then when the kids go to school there, have them go, that person from Sheehan right across the street is Moran, DAG is right near Lyman Hall, bring the squad car there. Then after, same thing with the middle school kids, go in, have the squad cars go down to Pond Hill, to, you know, Stevens and whatnot. And it's very simple.
Well, thank you for your suggestion. That will be up to the chief to assign his police officers in the best manner possible.
Can you, you could actually request that. I mean, are you going to do that?
I will speak to him as I have previously, and that is why I say there is constant involvement between the police department and our public schools. Whether it's right at the time that you were there, I don't know, but I know there is a regular involvement of our police department in the public schools.
I'm telling you right now, they haven't been out there. I bring my kids to school every morning. There was not one squad car, and I thought for sure, there hasn't been one in the morning, and there hasn't been anything in the afternoon. I pick up my kids after school. There's been nobody. I see them just hanging out downtown. Just have that person instead of hanging out downtown, just like I explained.
Mr. Stancuna, can I, can I ask you to pause for a minute? You've had over six minutes, and our rules provide three minutes per person, so I've been generous with you. But in light of the fact that there are other people in the room, I just want to ask before I let you go on if anybody else wants time before we close the public question and answer period. Nobody's indicated they do. You can continue, Mr. Stancuna. Thank you.
Thank you. So on that notion, don't put that under the carpet, Mayor. Come on. You know, you got people in here, and the thing with the pantry, too. We really, you guys get paid a lot of money for what you do, and we pay a lot of taxes, and that's another problem, too, is with the taxes. You know, we're paying a lot of money in this town, and we're just not getting anything back. It just seems like things aren't coming back to the residents. Like I had mentioned, the concerts. Do we have any shows coming up for the summer that I've been strongly vocalizing for months?
Park and Rec doesn't book anything for the summer until the budget's approved, and the budget will be approved at the beginning of May.
Okay, but part of the budget, can you please make the proposal to just get, try it out, get a big name, get a big vendor here, see how it works out, and even for that one night, one day, whatever time that they come, it's not just to try to get that revenue for that one day, it's to get people in from out of town, other cities, to see what Wallingford is, for they could say, hey, there's, you know, knuckleheads, there's Archie Moore's, there's beautiful restaurants and boutique shops and whatnot. And that way, we could get these businesses that are hurting in this town. They're hurting pretty bad. I go all over town all the time. I talk to businesses still, and they say, Daryl, we wish you got in there as town council. There's just no...
Do you know that Mr. Gallak is aware of your request?
I didn't ask Mr. Gallak. I'm talking to you. Don't put it on someone else's shoulders.
Mr. Gallak is the director of the Park and Rec Department. That department books the summer shows.
Okay, but you could actually make that request to him and see if we could get that rolling. Don't put it past the buck, Savoni. You're doing it again. I mean, I don't know what to tell you. You get paid a lot of money for what you do.
Well, I happen to think that I'm aware of how my job works.
I don't think so.
I don't think you do either. So you and I disagree.
I do.
We can agree that we disagree.
I've been in this town longer than you. I've been in this town 48 years, and I've never seen such a flip-flop of this town council and this whole government. I mean, you guys got a lot of money coming in. People are like hurting out there to know, what are you guys doing? And it's been nothing. It's been a standstill. It's just been a downfall. I'm just telling you right now, I'm not the only one. It's just that a lot of people are very upset and frustrated with what you guys are doing still. It's nothing. You just want to rush the meetings, rush people off the microphone, and call it a night, and that ain't right. You guys have a duty for the citizens of this town. It's not just me. It's everybody in this town, and you're letting everybody down. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that there was an indication that there was nothing further for public question and answer period, and therefore I will close the public question and answer period. Move on to item six, discussion and possible action regarding United Public Service Employees Union Local 424, Unit 30. This is the Food Services for the Board of Ed. Good evening, welcome, and if you could please remind us who you are for the record.
Cindy Lavallette, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Wallingford Public Schools.
Dominic Perom, Business Manager for the Public Schools.
Thank you. If you could give us a summary of what changes in this contract, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us. The food service contract that I'm bringing before you has a proposed duration of three years. It's important to highlight the fact that this contract is almost a full school year, or about a little bit more than half the school year, retroactive at this point. So with it being a three-year contract with part of it retroactive, it would end June 30th, 2020. The first year of the contract, which would be the current school year that we're in, is looking at a general wage increase of 1%. The second year, 1.25%, and in the final year, a 0% increase. The insurance waiver is something that we are continuing to really strive to control costs with, and so currently, the insurance waiver is at a 20%, which is about a little bit more than $2,000. And we, in this contract, would be reducing that to a $1,000 flat rate amount, so it reduces it by almost 50%. Because it's a question that frequently comes up, I did like to address what we have colloquially referred to as double dipping, meaning that somebody can't have a spouse who works for the town or the Board of Ed that is getting the insurance, and then they are also getting the insurance waiver. That was eliminated in a previous contract, and I'd just like to address that because I know it is a question that people frequently ask. I also do want to point out that the waiver was sunset for new hires in a previous contract. Some other significant changes with this contract include the increase of the premium cost share by 1% in the current year, by another percent next year. It would not increase in the third year of the contract, given that this contract is suggesting a 0% wage increase in the third year. There would be a switch from the PPO, which is what they are currently on, to the High Deductible Health Plan in the second year of the contract, with the HSA funded at 50% by the board. There would be an HRA option for those people who qualified under the requirements of that. There would also be a change in contract language that, at a point in time that this was feasible, the number of hours of work required to be eligible for insurance would be 30 hours per week, as opposed to the 20 hours. Couple other changes in it. The bereavement language does not include currently stepmother, stepfather, or stepchild, and given the changing dynamics of families, we felt that was really important to include, so that has been added to the contract. And then the last significant detail of the contract would be that we would not, that we would agree not to exercise the right to subcontract prior to June 30th, 2020. That does not preclude us from looking into it, so that we would be able to then switch to subcontracting at the point in time that this was over, but it would give the employees some assurances that, given the 1%, 1.25%, and 0%, that they would have some job security at this point in time, and that they would have not only job security, but the time to try and make the program viable and productive and to a break-even point. So those would be the overall highlights of the contract changes that are suggested.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Morganstein?
Yeah, hi, Cindy. My question is the 1% increase in the insurance premium. So the employee is paying 1% more, and can you give me a general sense of what that is out of their pocket? I don't have that figure with me. I'm not sure if Dominic might know that, however. So it went from 7% to 8%, so we're paying 92%?
93, and then we'll pay 92.
93, yeah.
Correct. And not retroactively. So if this contract is adopted, it would take effect right after that.
We don't have even just a general estimate of what that amount of money out of their paycheck. Are we talking $1,000 a year, or are we talking much less than that out of their pocket?
Much less.
Yeah. I just know that, you know, with their wage. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Laterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this contract for United Public Service Employees Union Local 424, Unit 30, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anything further at this point, Counsel Laterno?
That's it.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Just wanted to, if we look at page three, the union membership portion, section 4.2, can you just walk me through how that works?
This is the language that you asked us to take a look at typically, and the Board of Ed attorney has reviewed the language and assures us that it is in compliance with the law. The language hasn't been an issue for either management or for the bargaining unit. So essentially, it's looking that all employees in the bargaining unit are required, as a condition of the employment, to maintain membership in the union or to pay the service fee by the 30th day following their execution of the agreement, and so that any employee who is, any employee who is a union member who's paying a service fee to the union may either resign from the union or discontinue paying the service fee in the 15-day period preceding the expiration date of the contract by notifying the Personnel Office. I know you do ask about this.
Yep. So you're saying that the only time that one can opt out of the union is 15 days prior to the expiration of the contract, as this language says?
Yes, that is what the language says.
And it's been represented to you that that's in conformance with the law?
The Board of Ed attorney has reviewed the language on several occasions for me and does assure us that it is in compliance with the law, and the language hasn't been an issue for either management or the bargaining unit at any point in time.
Well, of course not, because we don't let people know about the extent of this provision. But one can only resign or discontinue paying a service fee, and if they discontinue paying the service fee, are they unemployed? Because once you get hired, you're automatically part of the union 30 days. You have to opt out of the union to then start paying the service fee. If you, within 15 days prior to the expiration of the contract, discontinue paying the service fee, what is the effect? It doesn't say. I'm just trying to figure out.
It doesn't say, right. And it's never been raised to our attention as an issue. I, like I said, multiple occasions have the Board of Ed attorney review the language. I've been assured multiple times that it is in compliance, and so it hasn't been an issue. I've been assured multiple times that it is in compliance, and so it hasn't been an issue for either management or the bargaining unit, and because my legal counsel does tell me I'm in compliance, I haven't had to delve into it more deeply than that.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the council? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laughlin?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Barone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Zervoni?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is an overview and discussion of the town's pension plan, including current status and future opportunities and risks. We have representatives from personnel and I believe professionals as well. Pension professionals.
Good evening.
Mr. Hutt, if you could introduce your company, please.
Yes, Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director. To my left is Bill Wolokot. He is the principal actuary from Hooker and Holcomb that the town uses. To my right is Gary Draghi from the Pen, oh, to the far right is Gary Draghi from the Pension Commission. And to my immediate right is Tony Trangizzi from FIA, which is the investment advisor that the town of Wallingford uses.
Well, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Counselor Chortel, this was your item. Would you like to begin?
I would be honored, Chairman Zervoni. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. I definitely, you know, a night away from your families. I really appreciate it. I, I put this on the agenda because it's come up a few times. This is my third year on the council, so I'm relatively new, and there's a few of us who are newer, and here and there, we've had some pension items that have come up, and it just felt like we really just, I wanted an overview just for all of us to have in public, let the public ask questions, let the council ask questions. So that's really my, that was my intention. So I really appreciate you coming out here, and you know, I, I had sent some questions in advance about the overview of the plan, how it's doing, how it works. That's really all I had. Others may have other questions, so I'll really turn it back to you for a presentation, and then we can open it up, if that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
What I could do is I can start with an overview. We currently have nine pension contracts in the town of Wallingford, including one length-of-service program for volunteer firefighters. We're currently in negotiations with five of those contracts right now, so I won't be indicating too much information regarding the strategy and negotiations. But we currently have a defined benefit plan that employees, a town employees are participants of. We recently successfully negotiated a alternative retirement plan known as a cash balance plan for management and employees on the town side. So with that basic information, if you have any questions, you know, I'd be more than happy, you know, to have the panel speak to them.
So as somebody who's more from the private sector, this will be like a caveman question on my part, but you know, why don't we have a 401K? Is that something, I know we have to collectively bargain and negotiate that, but beyond the collective bargaining aspect, is that something we can do? What prevents us from doing it? Is it not something we should do?
Well, you can't exactly have a 401K. I mean, you, you can have like a 457 plan for the town or 403B for the board. 401K for towns and cities are only a few grandfathered back, I think, prior to 1986. But, you know, the 457 plans and 403B plans are pretty similar. Chris, the 401K plan is known as the defined contribution plan, and so we have the alternative retirement plan that the town is negotiating is the cash balance plan, which is a defined benefit plan, but it has certain factors of it are similar to a defined contribution plan. Bill can talk more to that if you wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about the plan design.
Yeah, one thing I thought I'd point out, too, the plan's funded percentage did improve this year, even though we lowered the interest rate. Seventy-four percent funded. The average in the state is about seventy-two percent funded with a seven percent interest rate. Town of Wallingford using seven and a half, so a little bit higher than that. So you're right with your peers as far as the cities and towns in Connecticut. So you're not, you know, you're not significantly above or below the rest of the folks out there. With respect to the new cash balance plan, right now, the town has a lot of risk with the defined benefit plan having to earn a rate of return to support the benefits. The design of the cash balance plan says, all right, you're going to return whatever the fund earns. So it takes some of the investment risk away from the town, yet allows the folks at retirement to convert their cash into an annuity like they have now. So it's kind of what's called a hybrid plan. So it's going to reduce the risk, you know, the more folks you can get signed up for this plan, the less the risk to the town will be.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Could I ask a question about the Pension Commission? Just how often does it meet? You know, where does it meet? What does it do? Just high-level? I don't know. Is this?
Yep.
Right. Thanks. Well, the Pension Commission meets more or less quarterly, although there could be special meetings depending on circumstances. Effectively, we, we generally, we're looking at it from a top-down perspective. First and foremost, adopt policy, investment policy. So effectively, we have an investment policy statement that more or less guides our activities. Following through on that, we then set out an asset allocation, which we work in close consultation with Mr. Trangizzi's firm, FIA, who is, you know, basically an investment consulting firm. So there's a certain level of expertise that guides the group. And then once an asset allocation, and an asset allocation is adopted effectively to try to return the targeted rate of return for the fund that is actuarially determined. So effectively, then there is an investment lineup that we put together, which includes various asset classes, that is intended over a long period of time to generate that return. And of course, we try to minimize risk, so there's diversification elements, and certainly the selection of managers that, that is, that is carried out on a quarterly basis. Effectively, what we do is, is review the program and make sure that it's operating as intended and take any remedial action as necessary. And then, of course, there is general governance of the plan, which FIA helps manage basically what we call fiduciary governance program. So every quarter, there's a different element of that, so everything is done on an annual basis and, and reviewed on an annual basis. I don't know if you had questions about the composition of the commission as well? Yes, that'd be great. I think you apologize for missing that, but it's effectively, right now, it's five members, two by office, the comptroller, Mr. Jim Bose, who, excuse me, serves as secretary, and Mr. Hutt, who also is a member. And then we have three public members, myself, Mr. Rob Blanchard, and Mr. Bill Camilio. All are, the public members are town residents, and all have investment or finance backgrounds. And I would say it's a very good group. I would say it's very serious, deliberative, and also does a very good job at getting to conclusions and being efficient. Thank you. That's, that's great. I appreciate that. A quick question, follow-up on FIA. And someone, I, I'm not, I just have to ask this, because if I don't, somebody else will. Is, is your firm, is this something that goes out to bid every so often, or are you, how are you locked in as far as your role in this? Is it every, you know, how does that work?
I, I can maybe answer that, Councilman, if, you know, yeah, we, we put that out to a competitive process. I believe it's up this year, so he better behave himself. Yes, it is. What we strive for, when we put that together, is a firm that is independent. We get a lot of proposals that, you know, there might be a subsidiary of Merrill Lynch or Goldman, and they say that, well, you know, we don't steer our investments that way, but we look for someone who has no tie to anybody, who's truly independent, so that's the number-one factor. And that is in that, in that bid or that proposal package that does go out.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Bose. As, I have no further questions. Open it up.
Thank you. Counselor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, or somebody up there, if you could explain the cash benefit plan a little bit, a little bit better to us? How that exactly works?
Cash balance?
I'm sorry, cash balance?
Sure. It, it sort of looks like a, like a defined contribution plan, like your 401K that you were talking about. So it looks like that each year, the participant gets credited with some interest, whatever the fund earns, and the town makes some contributions. And so basically, it's, you know, whatever the fund earns is, is what's getting credit to the account. It's a little better than the 401K for participants, because they show that when you have an investment advisor, like you have fiduciary investment advisors picking out the funds, they generally return one percent better than the participants that invest themselves during the year. So that part there is a benefit. The other thing that it does is, at retirement, let's say you have a cash balance of a hundred thousand at retirement, you can then take that money and convert it to an annuity. And that conversion is based upon the most current actuarial assumptions. So the plan, we don't really care what, you know, in the funding, you know, what they take, whether do they take the annuity or do they take the cash? So it's a, it's a nice design that kind of keeps up with the, the current assumptions in the world.
Do you know of any other towns roughly our size that have used this for a number of years, have gone to this?
I don't. It's, it's been going on in the, in the public, in the private sector world since probably 1980. But I don't know why towns and cities in Connecticut haven't adopted it. There's a lot of state plans that use a cash balance plan all over the United States, so it's very common in the state plans, just not very common in municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Morganstein?
So it sounds that we're, most all of us privately employed and have a 401K or a 403B and have that familiarity, and it sounds like it's of a benefit to the town. So two-part question. We have offered it newly. I remember at our last meeting discussing it. And what is it for the employee to want to switch? What is the benefit to them? And how do we initiate such a thing? It has to be at contractual time, I presume?
It's negotiated. So right now, one of the unions that has approved it, the future people that get hired will go into this plan. You know, there's also the potential where some people that are currently in the union might want to get into this plan in the future themselves. So that's a possibility. It hasn't been really discussed, you know.
So the selling point, if it's something that's of benefit to the town, how do we then present this at negotiating time? That is, to their benefit to want to do this rather than a pension?
Well, it's a nice transition for the unions. Instead of going to the defined contribution plan where you have all your investment responsibility yourself, a lot of people don't want to take that, that chance. You get the professionals to invest the money for you, get a little bit higher return. The studies show one percent higher. And at retirement, if you do want to buy, if you do want to get an annuity, you can get one, you know, based upon the the town actuarial assumptions at the time. So it has some flexibility that a defined contribution plan doesn't have. The other thing that allows you to have is a disability benefit, which if, if you have a defined contribution plan, you really don't have one of those, you'd have to go out and buy that type of insurance if you're going to offer a disability benefit.
And the amount that we're putting in to the alternative cash management plan versus what we're putting into pension with this new group that got it, how does that compare?
Well, let me answer it this way. Right now, we're in a position where, you know, the cost of a defined benefit plan is the benefits you pay plus expenses. It gets offset by what the employees contribute, and it gets offset by the interest that's earned. So we're in a situation where the interest returns are down. So that means the plan costs more to the town, and we're in a situation where people are living longer. That means it costs more to the town. So instead, we go to this cash balance type of plan where it takes away some of that investment risk. And we found that, you know, a plan that's roughly, let's say the town contributes five percent of pay, you can contribute five percent of pay and absorb the cost of the disability benefit, so that the total cost of the plan is five percent of pay. Much more predictable. You won't see the skyrocketing costs that the town is seeing in a defined benefit plan with the, with this type of plan.
But we don't have any ability for the twenty-year employee who currently has a pension to move that money into a different plan, is that correct?
That's correct. That, that is not an option at the moment.
Because that, again, the pensions are certainly our biggest
That's correct.
Rising cost.
You know, perhaps down the road, that would be something that could be looked at, but right now, the plan is to put all new hires into the cash balance plan.
Right, but it's very top-heavy. So what's the downside to starting to look at a conversion from one to the other? Why wouldn't we be looking at that now?
Well, I have some information, but I'm reluctant to share that in an open forum because these contracts are still in negotiation, and I wouldn't want to be revealing the town's strategy.
Okay, so maybe we can discuss that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments for the public? Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, through the chair to the commission, I guess. What do we have our money invested in?
Sorry. The planned assets are invested in a series of institutional mutual funds, allocated or diversified across many different segments of fixed income and equity markets in the United States and outside the United States.
Percentages?
You want me to read the exact percentages?
Oh, I'll park them. I mean, you know, it's one ten, twenty, you know?
Yep. So the portfolio is about a third in fixed income, two-thirds in equities, and within the equities, it's about two-thirds of the equities are domestic and a third are international.
And how are those invested?
Through a series of institutional mutual funds. A portion, most of the domestic equity is passively invested, and the rest of the portfolio is through active mandates. About twelve or thirteen individual managers make up the total portfolio.
Cost per year?
Excuse me?
The cost per year?
It's about forty, forty-five basis points, or point four-five percent.
And what's our investment? So how much money do we have in there, so we know the amount?
Total assets at the end of the year were $206 million.
In equities?
No, total, the total portfolio.
And that's point, it's forty-five basis point, point four-five basis points?
Point four-five for the total portfolio.
Overall?
Yes.
So that is, you have a calculator there? That's approximately?
Half a percent. About a million dollars, I think.
And then you said two-thirds of the equity is, well, a percentage of it is in, how much of it is in passively and for the United States, domestic?
Nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand is how the, it's the forty-five basis points part of the value. I'm sorry, what was the question?
The United States or domestic equity, how much of it is passive?
Domestic equity is forty, forty-one point eight percent of the portfolio at the end of the year, and thirty-six, thirty-seven point one percent of that is passive. Or said another way, just about five percent is that is passive. Or said another way, just about 5% is not as active in domestic equity of the 41.8.
And who do you have it invested with? Passive, I mean, passive, is, is it S&amp;P? Is it Wilshire 5000?
Vanguard, Russell 1000 Value, and Russell 1000 Growth. They're two different funds.
And the foreign is just with?
The foreign is, are all active funds. The four managers are Hartford, which is actually sub-advised by a firm called Wellington in Boston, MFS, Harding-Lovner, and Delaware are the four managers.
How have they done?
They've all performed reasonably well.
Numbers for the last, or do you have them?
I can.
I mean, have they beat, beat the benchmarks?
Yep. So the international managers, over the last year, the collection of international managers were up 31%, and the benchmark was 27.2. Of the four managers, two of them outperformed. There are inde, there are specific indexes, and two of them underperformed. That's just over the last 12 months.
12 months, what's your time, what's your period? Is it June to June, or is it?
This is December 31st, the data that I'm giving you.
So it's January to December?
Yes.
Thank you. I know Mr. Chardillo has some questions, so I'll let him go first.
Mr. Chardillo?
Well, Chardillo, 2 Bayberry Drive. I had a couple of questions, just to, to get an explanation of some items that are part of the pension liability. I'm not sure who, who can answer this. Maybe Mr. Boz will answer it. There's a line item that's called service cost. We spend a little over $5 million a year. What is that?
The, two parts to the pension cost. One is service cost. Think of that as future service cost. That's the cost of the benefits for, that are accruing right now for people that are working.
So we pay five, like in 2017, we paid 5.664 million for service cost. What is the service that is being provided? What, what is the cost? I'm not following you. Is it to, what is it? Is it to administer the plan, or?
No, 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 no. This is the benefit, the value of the benefits that are accruing to the people that are working. So various plans have different multipliers.
Okay.
Some, some plans are 2% times your final average salary.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the life of the plan, in other words, you have a 25-year?
Yeah, but this is just one year's worth accrual.
Wow, okay. Service cost. So basically, we have a liability of accrued liability, is what you're saying, of 5.664 million in 2017, if I understand you correctly. We have that every year. It's an accrual.
Yeah, so you're, and you would expect your service cost to go up with salaries?
Mm-hmm. And then there's another item called interest, 17 million. What is that? Is that 7.6% of a balance, or what is that?
I, I don't see a 17.
Well, I'm looking at the audit report. It shows a four-year summary of the pension, and it shows the service cost, $5 million a year.
Okay, yeah, you're looking at the
Interest.
At the Gatsby report, if I have that with me. The, the 17 million is probably the interest on the liability, so.
Interest on the liability.
So if you take like 7.5% of the total liability, that's probably pretty close to that number.
Well, liability is 58 million.
That doesn't sound right.
The end of 17. So you're saying 17 million is...I, I don't understand that. But we can go on. We'll skip that. It's, it's something I, I just don't understand.
Yeah, the liability of the plan is well, is well over 200 million, so.
Okay, I guess I was referring to net, net unfunded liability.
Right, right, right.
Yes, the, the actual liability is 250, yeah.
Yeah, so if you take the 250,000 times the interest rate, that's probably pretty close to that interest cost you were talking about.
Got you.
250 million, yep.
Then we have experience is another line item here.
Right.
What is that? A million five?
Well, we have, we have actuarial assumptions, and while I can look into a crystal ball, they don't always come true. So there's a difference between what we're assuming and what actually happens.
Yep.
Now, a million five may seem like a lot of money, but when you compare it to over 250 million, you're talking like 3/4 of a percent or something like that, right? Which means the assumptions were 99.25% accurate. So it's, it's a lot of money, but they were pretty close, really.
Okay. Yeah, I don't understand that either, but that's all right. There's another line item that says change of assumptions. That only happened this year, 2.68 million.
We lowered the
No other year.
Yeah, we lowered the, we've, we've, we've changed the assumptions before to lower the discount rate. That generally creates more liability.
So you fine-tune it every year? Okay. All right. Okay. So let me give you, I guess, I was happy to hear that you have a cash, cash accounting plan. It's for management and new employees.
Well, it's for, it's for the management group.
So that's already in place? Everybody's bought into it?
For new employees, for one particular union.
Okay. But all of management is, is in the plan?
No, that's not correct. Just the new hires
Okay.
Were hired after the date of ratification are going into the cash balance plan. But eventually, it's, one thing I don't want to create the illusion is that you're going to see savings overnight. We're talking a generation of time before you see any changes to this plan. It's the same if you had a DC plan, it's the same if you have a cash balance plan. Whenever you introduce a new pension plan, which is what we've done, it's going to take a generation to see real savings. As people transition out, they'll be going into the new plan.
Well, I hope it, I hope it can happen quicker than a generation, because I think, speaking as a taxpayer, I see the plan as, it's a failed plan as we speak. And the reason I say that is, and I'm not directing this at any person or organization or anything else, I think it's just the design of the plan. I'm basing it on the fact that we are, the, the town's contribution is structured in this plan such that the worse the plan performs, the higher the contribution from the town. And, and if you look at just the four-year period, it's represented here, 10 years ago, we were contributing about 2, 2.5 million. 2017, it says employer contribution 8.6 million. So as the plan worsens in performance, the contribution from the town is going up dramatically. Just in the last four years, I look at it as a penalty. It says, hey, the plan's not performing, and if the plan doesn't perform, there's a penalty imposed on the town. The way, the way the, the plan is designed, we have to put more money in to try to fill the hole. And we keep chasing the hole. And we've, we've spent, I just went back to four years, kind of an extra 21 million over what we would be paying if the plan had no unfunded liability. And over a period of 10 years, it's cost us about $38 million more. So I would like to see us be as aggressive as we can. I appreciate the fact that it's a tough transition. But I think that it's, it has a very deleterious effect on our taxes. As I said, 21 million extra in the past four years, 38 million extra in the past 10 years. We currently contribute more than three times what the employee contributes for the same reason, because we have an unfunded liability. The liability is accelerating while the balance of the pension fund is not keeping up. I'm concerned that, we had a pretty decent year pension-wise this last year, I guess, and that's a good thing. But I'm concerned about the next crash. And I think if the next crash is bad enough, based on how we're positioned, we're going to go from a failing plan to a crisis, because, you know, this 8 million is probably going to bump up to 12 million. So we have a problem right now, and it has to be addressed. I don't, I think the end state, I think you're moving in the right direction with some kind of a cash plan or a 401-type plan. And I think we should do that as quickly as possible. And I think we should make it part of, I guess it is part of the negotiations, the contract negotiations. But we should protect people who are in the plan, whatever they've accrued, they, they can keep it. And then create some kind of an incentive to roll over into this new plan. And, you know, we should provide education for our people to help them manage their own pension. So I appreciate the information. I think we have a serious problem. I've said it before. One last thing, I would like to see personally, as a, as a citizen, taxpaying citizen, part of this quarterly reporting mechanism, which I believe we need to have, an executive summary, which includes all the finances, why don't we put the pension in there too as a lineup, just to keep, let people know how we're doing? It's very easy to do. Doesn't require a meeting, four or five pages, put it out there on the website, and you'll get a lot less questions at, at this meeting, I think. Or at least the questions you do get will, will be more meaningful. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify something. In terms of the negotiations, we are not just saying only new employees can go into cash balance. I mean, if, if there was a desire on the part of others to go in, they could go in, right? I don't want to leave the impression that, no, it only is someone new who can go in that.
Correct. Well, I mean, for the reasons that I mentioned earlier about negotiation strategy, I'm not sure it's a discussion we want to have in a public meeting.
No, but I'm just saying, as, as a, as a general
If there was a proposal from a bargaining unit that this is what they wanted to do, it'd be something to consider, but that, it's not coming back.
Parties have to bargain.
Yeah. Yeah, that was my understanding, that, that
Oh, Mr. Chardillo, welcome back.
Well, I thought that the mayor was talking to me, but I guess he was.
No, I was clarifying in general, because I hear comments about it, and we're, we're looking to improve things, but you obviously have to have two parties agree.
Right.
And, and what you have is a result of those negotiations. But we don't go into it saying, oh, well, no, you know, there's one thing for one and one for another.
On, on that issue, though, in terms of encouraging the transition, if you look at what the pension is costing the town right now and project that out, we could be very liberal in terms of an incentive for these, for these folks to transition to it. You know, not just a, a straight, you know, we're going to cut you off here, and today you're on the defined benefit plan, tomorrow you're on the defined contribution plan. Give them an incentive that saves the town money in the long run and encourages them to transition. Because I think one very big benefit of this 401, 401K-type plan is the fact that it belongs to the employee. They're responsible for it. Let's help educate them, and I think we can. And in the long run, many, probably most of them will be better off, because they'll have a better understanding of how to manage their retirement, and they have a legacy when they pass away. Today, they don't.
Mr. Gross?
Just so you know, you're the last speaker on this item, and you have about two and a half minutes.
Is that the 20-minute mark?
Yes.
Thank you. Does town own any individual stocks and bonds? Okay. And just a philosophical, then, how much do we own, own in bonds, approximately?
About 64 million.
Cost, cost the town, approximately, you know what the fees are on those? And while he's looking that up, as to Mr. Chardillo's point, these, they get a quarterly booklet. Would be nice to maybe at least once a year or something, put one of these up onto the website. They're not, it's not hard to do, under the financial tab. Mr. Boz, maybe, something like that, that way. You know, they're available that way.
The weighted average fee is about 40 basis points for the fixed income?
Then philosophically, the town has a forever obligation to its employees for the life of, because it's non-ending. It's not like my life, I want an IRA, I want it to end when I die. Why wouldn't it, the town overall, have much more in stocks, if not all in stocks? Because over the long term, won't stocks perform better than bonds?
It's an attempt to strike the balance on an appropriate risk profile to achieve the stated actuarial expected return.
But if I had everything in stocks from 1929 from the crash to now, or if I had everything in bonds from 1929 to now, which one's going to be about double the percent?
Equities outperform bonds.
So wouldn't that allow us as a town, if we had a greater percentage or all into stocks, because we have a time horizon that doesn't sunset? So why wouldn't you want to try and get the greatest return over the long term? Because we can take those peaks and valleys, you know, we can take the dips, and when the time comes up, it'll cost, in the long term, the idea would be, we would have less money to pay into these because our great, we would have a greater return over the long term.
The asset allocation is reviewed regularly by the commission with us in trying to strike that balance. I would say the counterpoint would be an environment like 2008, where if you were 100% equities, your value would have gone down in half. Your required contribution, the town's required contribution, would have gone up dramatically as a result of that.
And
That's the balance that the commission, I believe, tries to strike.
And if it was, and if we were 100% in equity at that time, what would have been the reward today?
I think that your, your, your points are ones that I think every pension committee and commission contemplates at every meeting.
Then why don't we try?
I want to make one more, one comment, too. When I looked at the benefit payments that went out of the fund for fiscal 17, that was $14 million. So you have to have some liquid money in your portfolio to be able to pay those benefits.
Of course, right.
I just thought, you can't go like 100% stocks.
You can have, you can go 90. If, with a $200 million portfolio, you can do something of that nature. You are getting dividends on your stocks and so forth, and, you know, that type of thing, so. Are you cutting?
Make it very short, please.
Well, I don't, it's not very short. That's the whole point, so.
Well, Mr. Draghi told us that they have four meetings a year and some more, and you're welcome to go to those.
I used to go to them, but there's, you know, during the day, people work sometimes, you know, that type of thing. They want to make them after 5:00 sometimes.
I think he'll consider that now.
If you want to send it to me, Mr. Gross, I'll make sure we get the appropriate answer to you.
All the questions?
I'm sorry?
I hit
Whatever question you have.
All right. Well, the, some of the funds that we invest in, how do we pick the non, are we, we're not in an S&amp;P fund at all. We're just in those two Wilshires, the Wilshire 1000s?
Russell.
Russell.
We're in two Vanguard funds.
Well, I don't care who's, who's administers. I'm, I'm talking about the, the index that you're in. So, because they're pretty competitively priced. Why aren't we, has there been question why we're not in an S&amp;P, or why are we just in those two? I know it's a broader-based market.
The
What's the philosophy on that?
We, the portfolio held the S&amp;P 500 prior and switched to the, the Russell 1000. The difference between the S&amp;P 500 and the Russell 1000 is the second 500 biggest company. So they both have the 500 biggest, and it was an attempt to achieve exposure to the mid-cap segment of the market as well. So the Russell 1000 accomplishes that. It has every, all 500 stocks that are in the S&amp;P 500 are in the Russell 1000 plus another 500, roughly.
Right, and just Right, and just, because I, because as you'll know, most of the S&amp;P, most of it's driven by a few stocks. And so when you go out further, sometimes, in the kind of market we have now, the, it's more narrow in the stocks that are doing well versus it's not a broad-based market right now. And so that's why, are you guys as nimble as that to move between indexes quickly like that? Because this has not been a broad-based market.
There's considerable exposure to the names that have done very well recently, which is why the performance, I think, has been strong. The commission and the portfolio is reasonably nimble, and changes have been made within the confines of the investment policy statement and the stated asset allocation target and ranges to try to take advantage of opportunities as they arise.
I'll just ask one last one, then. Let you take your 20-minute rule. The foreign markets, are you into Europe? Or where, where are you foreign?
The exposure is broad. So it include, it's, it's Europe as well as other segments of the non-US equity markets.
That means South America? I mean, what, what part of the world are you in? Asia? I mean, what?
The most meaningful exposure is in developed markets, which is mostly Western Europe, Australia, and Japan. But there is some exposure to emerging markets in the portfolio, which would include China and India and South America and Central America.